Good evening, folks. It's now 6:04 here in the City Council, City Hall here, October 15th, 2013, at 116th West Bridge Street. We're now calling the City Council meeting to order. I'd like to call upon Drew Travis, pastor of the First Presbyterian Church, to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Texas Pledge. All rise.
Let us pray. Gracious God of creation and life, we give you thanks this night for the wonders of your world, for the marvel of your creation, for the rain that comes in wet, star-parched land. God, we thank you for those that give of themselves in public service to bring community to the places we live together. God, we pray this night that you grace us with your presence. Move amongst us in your spirit that we might know you near to make decisions that are wise and helpful, to make decisions that benefit this community. God be with us. We do pray, and we pray for this world of ours where so much needs your attention. God, please be with us. We do pray, dear God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. We will now move into the consent agenda. The approval of the council minutes of the regular meeting of October 1st, 2013. I'd ask that the next item, to consider and approve the request of the closure of some streets, be moved to the deliberation. There are some changes to be made on that one. And the second one would be discuss and consider an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Granberry Code of Ordinance to adapt an international fire code and the accompanying North Central Texas Council of Government amendments. Counsel, you had an opportunity to look all these over. This regards the first one there. We'll move that to the deliberation. Are there any changes or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agendas are approved. We now move into the deliberation agenda. As I said, we'll go with the first one there being to consider and approve a request of closure of streets for the night of Country Christmas Parade, close sections of and Reed Bridge, and I think we're going to change this to Houston, Crockett, and Pearl Street on Friday, November 29th, 2013, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And B, for the Granberry Opera House grand opening and gala, close sections of, once again, Reed Bridge, Houston, and Crockett Street in the one-block area surrounding the Hood County Courthouse Historic Square on Thursday, December 5th, 2013, from 11:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. And also close a section of Pearl Street on Thursday, December 5th, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. I'm going to call upon Mitchell George. Could you kind of elaborate that a little bit for us? What we're doing here and what the change is, please?
Mitchell George, Communications and Marketing Director for the City of Granberry. I'll answer any questions. In regards to elaboration, typically during festivals or events, we like to close a couple of the streets in order to give us a lot more space and room. During the gala event, during the Opera House opening and the pre-opening festival events, our focus there is to have enough space to kind of spread out the crowds that we anticipate down on the square. We're also going to have some valet parking, and we'll have plenty of spaces for those cars to be parked off the main streets. But we would like to bring in some seats or seating for spectators to watch some of the pre-opening events.
But on the night of the lights, Country Christmas Parade, we will close Houston, Bridge, Crockett, and Pearl?
That's correct.
All three. Okay, that's what I was...
That's correct.
And we did have some maps on that, but we didn't get those available right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
Counselor, is there any more, is there any questions for...
Do we close, do we close Crockett and Bridge during the Christmas candlelight tour of homes thing?
Do we close those streets?
Or do we need that parking for, is the courthouse on the tour this year?
The courthouse is a part of the tour, but we don't need to close those streets.
Okay. Counsel, any more questions for Mr. George? Thank you, Mitchell.
You bet.
With that, I'll consider and approve the request. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of the closures of the said streets. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I got a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That one is approved. Our next item is to consider and award a construction contract to Dow Well Service, Highway 377, Stevensville, Texas, 76401, for the James Road Well Number One and Number Two project, based on their total low bid of $396,000. Al, do you want to talk about that one a little bit for us?
Yes, sir. We had two bids, actually, on these two wells. These are on James Road, which is on the east side, which is pretty important for us on this side. This is the east pressure plane where we actually need, well, a lot more water since we have a lot of growth on that side now apart from the HEBs and the Krogers and all that coming in. So again, we did have, like I said, we had two bids. We had a central well, and then we also had Dow for the $396,000. And then we'll have another one here in a minute. But anyway, so anybody have any questions? I believe this is, Tony, just for you on this one. I think this is, I believe, nine and 10 right here, by the way.
How much money we got left on that?
I would have to look. I'd have to get with Ava to see it. But we still have money. I do know that. So we'll keep drilling as long as we have the money.
We're going to end up somewhere between 12 and 14 wells, something around there.
Yes, sir. I believe, and we may get a little bit more than that, but that's, I'm shooting for 12 to 14.
Counsel, any more questions for Al? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, award the construction contract to Dow Well Service, Highway 377, Stevensville, Texas, for the James Road Well Number One and Number Two project, based on their total low bid of $396,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
I'll second that again.
I've got a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider and award a construction contract to Dow Well Service, Highway 377, Stevensville, Texas, 76401, for the Meander Replacement Well, 1R project, based on their total low bid of $174,000. Al?
Again, this is another well that's on the east side, which is what we're needing. One thing I will point out real quick is, because sometimes, if you notice the difference in the prices on the first two compared to this one, the difference is, this one's roughly about 450 feet deep, where the other two are about 600 feet deep. So again, farther east they go, the deeper they start becoming. As far as if we started heading towards Crescent, they range anywhere from about 700, 750 feet to hit the Trinity. So anyways, that's kind of, so if you had any questions on, for us, the price differential, that's what it is.
Al, a question, Mr. Mayor. Al, what was your maximum usage this summer?
Our max was, I believe it was 3.4 million.
3.4 was your biggest day?
Yes, sir.
Seems like since I've been on council or within a relatively short period of time, our high had been 2.5 million a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
So in two years or three years, we've moved from 2.5 to 3.4.
We actually, last year, the high was 3.1. Actually, we hit 3.1, and then we even hit 3.2 one time the year before that. It was about 3, and then back in, I believe in '09, we were actually about 2.9. So we, yeah, we've steadily increased. And again, you know, we're picking up more and more customers. We're growing roughly about 4% on the, on the actual connections that were, that's coming in. And so that's something we have to account for, obviously, with the, you know, with the wells. Obviously, you know, this has given us more production, which is definitely helping us out. But we are, as you see, and even we've been in drought conditions under, you know, stage two for a long time now, we're still hitting those peaks still during the summer.
We had, we had good rains this year for keeping lawns going, but I was, one of my questions was, do you think the low lake level had any, anything to do with the increased uses of water?
No, sir. I don't. I mean, a lot of it, like I said, I think is just the overall, you know, I mean, with it being 105, 106, and with the, with the more people that we have, I think that has a lot to do with it, as far as the lake levels, you know, I mean, it could have a little bit to do with it, as far as some of the people maybe that were watering out of the lake that couldn't now, that have to turn to the city water or something, that's a possibility.
What's, what is our current allocation from AMUD, and how much of that did we use this year?
The current per day is 1.2 million that we have left. And for the total, I'd have to look at it and see what it was for the total. I believe last year was 185 million gallons or something like that last year. I couldn't tell you what it is yet this year, so.
And you have, what, 365 available or something like that?
Yes, sir. And normally what we do is, it's a little deceiving, you know, because you hear 180 million, but, which would be, you know, 500,000 a day or something. But, but the bottom line is, most of that we use during the peak, is when it hits us. So a lot of that water's used in, you know, a three, four-month period.
Right, yeah.
So instead of, you know, all the way through, as the east side's growing a little bit, we actually are using a little bit more, and that's why it's very important, obviously, to get the wells on the east side to kind of knock that water out, so we're not using as much.
Is the AMUD water like the Brazos River water, which take, take or pay, or pay or take? Pay and take or whatever?
It's identical to what we had with the BRA contract. Basically, they base it off O&M, percentages off O&M. So for example, if out of the total SWAT plant, if we're 10%, then whatever, that 10% of the whole allocation of that plant, that's what we're billed. That's how they do this. So it's, it's identical to what we have with BRA.
So going into next summer, unless say you've got your 14 new, the total of the 14 new wells in there, what would be your daily capacity?
That would put us up to roughly about 4.3.
4.3.
Yes, sir.
So another three to four years' growth.
Yes, sir. But again, you have to remember now, in 2014, October 2014, we will lose another 500,000 to AMUD.
500 goes back to AMUD.
Yes, sir.
And then that rotates out when?
That's October 2014.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I ask a question, please?
Or Councilman Allen?
What is the estimated GPM on those two wells, each one, the deep one versus the shallow one?
The, the two out there are roughly about 75 to 85 GPM in that area. This one right here in this area, one we had out there was roughly about 65. It's just, some of them, sometimes, we have some shallow wells that produce actually better than some of our deeper wells. And then we also have some wellfields out to the, I guess, southeast that are actually, they're deep, but they're also really good wells, 100 gallons plus per minute.
But we pay AMUD if we use the water or don't use it?
We pay the debt service. We'll pay that, and then, yeah, any kind of O&M. So if we don't, if we didn't take any water whatsoever from there, we would still have the debt service that we'd have to pay.
Is that through 2017?
Yes, the debt service would go away in 2017, because AMUD would completely take over 100% of our...
So, so the 4.3, does that include AMUD or doesn't include AMUD?
Currently, it does, yes.
Okay. Whenever that runs out in 2017, how much water will we have then?
As of now, we'd have about 3.1 million.
3.1.
Counsel, any more questions for Al? Thank you, Al. I will now entertain a motion to award, kind of lost track of what we're doing here, but we're going to award the construction contract to Dow Well Service, Highway 377 Stevensville, for the Meander Replacement Well, 1R project, based on their total low bid of $174,000. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider appointment to fill a vacancy of a tourism advisory board. Counsel, we looked over the sheets there, and as you can see, there was a vacancy that came about when they, one of the people on the advisory board, when Tracy Hartman, I believe, resigned. And actually, I don't know that she ever started on it, but it's the entertainment, I don't have it up here, but I believe it's the entertainment one, position there. Now, all these boards, most of them come due on December or whatever, but it's been out there for a while, and we've got one person that has actually was approached, and Mr. Kent White, you have his application there, and that's the only person so far that has, has come forward or said that he would be willing, that he would want to be on that position. Mitchell George, is there any more things I'm leaving out on this one, or? Thank you.
No, you're correct, Mayor Protam.
Mayor, isn't this one of the slots that his department actually appoints and we just approve it?
I don't, I don't believe it is. I believe it's one that you, it's a two-year, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. George? Or two and a half?
Councilman Allen, the council, the city council appoints all members of the city boards, but Mr. George's department is responsible for vetting the applicants when they come in and making sure they're eligible to sit on that board. And it's my understanding that Mr. White is eligible for this position in the entertainment slot on your tourism board, but it's up to the city council to confirm his nomination and actually appoint him to the board.
And this, and this is the advisory board that used to report to the council, but it was moved to report to the Director of Communication and Marketing.
Sure. No, I mean, I think Kent is well qualified for entertainment. And I don't have a problem. I just, I remember that when we set the board up, the council appointed some, and some of them was done by that department, and I just didn't, I couldn't remember which one it was. I have no problem with Mr. White.
This is, this one here is a part of the 10-member board that's on the list here.
And the remainder of the candidates will roll off next year in 2014.
Right. Counsel, is there any questions to Mitchell George? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, to consider and appoint and fill the vacancy of the tourism advisory board with Kent White. Do I have a motion? I've got a motion by Councilman Couch.
I'll second that.
I've got a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That appointment is filled. The next item...
For clarification, is this going to be sold a one-year or a half-year contract, or do you want to extend through two to three years?
We need to leave, we need to leave it like it is. That way, it rotates.
I agree. It needs to go to, to the December, to the vacancy of the other one. Right.
Okay.
Then they all go the same time. The next item is to consider and approve an ordinance providing for the approving, for approving and change in rates of Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Texas Division as a result of a settlement between Atmos and the Texas Municipal under the rate review mechanism, finding the rates set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable, directing Atmos Energy to reimburse the city's rate case expenses. I'm going to ask our attorney here to kind of brief the council on what's going on here. It's basically just a lawsuit that's been pending, and they've got a settlement now, and they're recommending that we go ahead and approve that. But I'll let Stuart talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Gentlemen, you remember that the City of Granberry is one of a multitude of cities that are part of an organization known as the Atmos Texas Municipalities. And we've seen these kind of resolutions and ordinances come through before, but this time, and I want to clarify one thing, that this is not a lawsuit that the city is involved in, but rather, it's a ratemaking case. And what happened is Atmos Gas decided they wanted to increase the amount they charge to citizens and the commercial businesses for gas, and the Atmos Texas Municipalities Coalition, of which Granberry is a part of, decided to challenge that ratemaking authority at the Railroad Commission in Austin. Originally, Atmos Gas said they wanted a total increase of 22.7 million, but after negotiations that have stemmed at least the last two years that I'm aware of, the Atmos Texas Municipalities Coalition has determined and has gotten Atmos to agree to a reduced increase of 16.6 million. What does that mean for the average residential customer? It means an increase of about 74 cents per month. For the commercial customers, it's 2.16, so $2.16 per month. You basically have three options here. You can deny Atmos's requested increase and approve no increase at all. You can deny Atmos's increase and approve an 8.5 million increase, which is based on the Atmos Texas Municipalities Consultants Report. Or you can do what the coalition is recommending, deny the 22.7 million increase, but approve the 16.6 million increase. Now, keep in mind, if you choose option one or option two, Atmos has the right to appeal that, which, which could result in the Railroad Commission granting them a much larger increase than will you be approving tonight. The bottom line is, and you, and you've got this in your packet, so you should, you've had the opportunity to review it, the bottom line is that all of the cities in the coalition have passed the same ordinance, and we're being asked to join those cities and adopt this new ratemaking review, an improvement increase for Atmos of 16.6 million.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, is there any questions?
Stuart, what's the difference? They're saying request increase approved and increase of 8.5 million. Is that what they're agreeing to, or is it 16.6 million?
No. In the course of the ratemaking review process, the Atmos Texas Municipalities hired a consultant to come to compile a report, and that report said that the increase should be 8.5 million. Now, that's what the Atmos Texas Municipalities starting point in their negotiation was. Atmos wanted 22.7, the cities wanted 8.5, and the middle ground, the negotiation, negotiated settlement, the middle ground was 16.6. So you'd be approving six, an increase for Atmos of 16.6, not 22.7. And like I said, this ordinance has been passed by multiple cities across Texas, stemming all the way from here, I think, all the way up to Longview. And the deadline is November 1st, which is why it's on tonight.
Counsel, any more questions on this item, concerns? That, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance providing for the approving and change in the rates of Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Texas Division as a result of the settlement between Atmos and the Texas Municipalities under the rate review mechanism that would set the rates by the achieved tariffs to be just and reasonable, directing the Atmos Energy to reimburse the city's rate case expenses. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Perkel. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Have a second? Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to discuss the status of the Opera House redevelopment project and consider and approve any recommendations from the Opera House redevelopment committee. Rob, I think we're going to have you speak a little bit. Are you prepared? That smile tells me he is.
Rob Keen, 322, or 3, 322, Meandering Way, Granberry, Texas. Progress, but we're constantly having progress. The rain is, it slowed us down one day, but today we put up tents so we could still lay rock. Put tents over our scaffolding so the rain would not stop us from continuing with the rock on the facade. Things are moving well. We've got everything set for Thursday night's party, I guess you want to call it. The fire sprinkler system is powered up and is under pressure right now. We anticipate a good inspection on it tomorrow. The, we're planning on our final inspections for above ceiling tomorrow, so that we can close up the ceilings and mud and tape. The second floor, which is the rehearsal hall, should be completed by the end of this week, if not the first of next week, and we'll be putting in temporary walls for the rehearsal hall people to start in November. The only setback we have right now is we're awaiting the carpet. We don't know when the mill is going to start making it. We're kind of at their mercy. They don't, they don't just stop everything just to make our carpet, so it's been on order, but they haven't told us that they've started making it yet. So I think by the end of this week, we should have an answer on, on the carpet. I will, we plan on having power. It was, it was planned for the last week of October to get the MDP in, which is the main switch, but that is coming in tomorrow. And we will be setting it, provided the weather lets us, and then we will get ahold of the causey with the, with the city, and we'll start preparations of hooking up to main power. The dimmer panel issue was worked out today. All the loads were sent to our engineers so that we could get the dimmer panel built, and Andrew and Jimmy, who are over the AV part of it, have approved it all and know, know how to hook up what they got to do, to dim the lights in the theater. As of that, I will entertain any questions or comments.
Counsel, any questions for Rob?
All I can say, it sure is cleaner than it was last week.
Yes.
It looks, it's looking good in the back.
Oh, you're talking about in the back?
In the back, yeah.
Where the conaxes are gone?
I mean, it's just world difference after you went through and cleaned all that up.
Yeah. Now it's, now it's piled with rocks.
Yeah.
We've got the, we've got the storage containers out, and then we put in rock.
I think we need to take some of those rocks out to the auction. They did pretty good Saturday night, one rock out there.
Well, you know, 11 acres out here has a whole bunch of them. You can sell them all.
Hey, Rob, I have a question for you.
Sure.
We're really planning hard to get open on December the 5th. Do you see any problems with that? Have a grand opening and...
I'm kind of an optimist, and I've been doing this for 42 years. And, and when I set a date, then I usually meet it or beat it. This one is, is pretty tough because of all the lead times on, on items. My, my fear in the, in the beginning was the handrail, but the handrail is in, and they're bending it right now, on site, to match the stairs. We, in the beginning, when, when I first started this and I got everything up to concrete level, ready to build, I was 32 days ahead of schedule. And right now, I might be two days behind schedule. And, and I can make up those two days. But my intention is to be done by the Thanksgiving weekend, so that everything can be cleaned up, organized, so that on December the 5th, there's not a lot of work to do to get that party going.
Also, you working with Alva on the parking lot?
Yes, we're meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock on that.
Okay. So that's, that's going to be an important move for us, for the tent and everything back there, so.
Yes. My, our intention... My, our intention is to have all of our trailers and all of our equipment off by the end of October, so that Alva can come in and start his parking lot.
It looks good. Looks real nice.
The, about the only thing that we're going to have on that is, if we can't lay stone because of the rain, if it's, but I'm sure it's going to stop, it never rains this long in Texas.
Easy, easy.
So then, then we still plan on having all the stone up by the end of October, so then that place will be cleaned out.
Rob, how do you lay stone? I understand putting the, the tent up to lay it, but how do you get it set with rainy and the moisture out here? How's that?
Well, the moisture, the moisture doesn't get to our mortar when it's under a tent.
I know that, but I mean, you just leave the tent there all night long, there's no moisture that gets into that while you're setting it tonight?
Sure, yeah. The best, the best way to lay stone is if the stone's wet. Matter of fact, there's a lot of specifications on some buildings when the temperature is so hot, and you've got dry brick or dry stone, they require you to wet it before you lay it.
Yeah.
Because the, if you put it up dry, the, the stone will suck all the moisture out of the, out of the mortar, and it, it won't adhere to it. It doesn't give it a chance to go into the, the pores of the stone or brick and lock it. So the best time to lay a stone is when it is wet.
That's what I've been doing wrong, okay. Thank you. Counsel, any more questions for Rob?
Rob, you just continued to do a great job over there. You know, I'm becoming pretty familiar with the building, and I still go in there, just totally impressed with how things are going. I know you are going through extra efforts for us, uh, to put together the, the party on Thursday night and Tuesday, and I, I want you to, that we really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Counsel, that was just a discussion item, and we're moving right along on the Opera House. Counsel, when Couch will?
Yeah, while we're talking about the Opera House, I kind of wanted to give a sense to the council. I'm not looking for a vote or anything, but I'd like to offer something up. The, for those that you don't know, we are working on a fundraising campaign that really commences Thursday evening with a wine and cheese party, and given a backstage tour of the Opera House for naming rights on different elements of the, of the Opera House. And I think it makes sense to enlist the Granbury Theater Company in that effort. And so I'd like us to consider doing a commission on donations that would be made, because after all the grand opening and the hoopla of, of the Opera House opening, you know, the, the effort of the fundraising could, could go on. And I believe our best advocates for that are going to be the actors on stage, and it's an opportunity for them, three or four nights a week, to hopefully enlist other donors on an ongoing basis. So I just think that it's smart that we would, we would do something to that regard, and I just would like input from the other council members.
Are you wanting input of, yes, we should do it, or it's okay, or?
Yeah.
Want a check from me, or?
We'd take checks, we've got forms, we're going to fill out, but.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think it's, you know, everything that we put into this, all the, I mean, this grand opening that we're having, all the things that we're, we're getting, we're looking forward to, is things that we're going to promote it, we're going to raise money, we're going to get, try to put money back to the city that we've, that we've spent naturally. And, and I think anything that we can do like that, and I've seen this community, they like to come out and have cheese and wine and then, and go to those kind of things, and I think it'd be a, a good event. Could you la, I mean, or, or is it going to be invitation only, or anybody comes, or?
Well, if Thursday is invitation only, on Tuesday, we're going to do this again.
Okay.
And the Opera Guild and the season ticket holders will go and be at that, but if you know of people that would like to come?
At the facility?
Yes. On Tuesday night, just let me know.
And bring the checkbook.
And bring a lot of money.
You got that, you got that run-through Rob there. You're not going to get in his way or anything, right?
If you want to be invited, call the city and let them know, right?
Right, right.
We only, we don't want to limit that list. I've been in, through the Opera House a number of times over the last couple of weeks, and I concur with Councilman Couch. Rob and his guys are doing a wonderful job. It's, it's going to be a beautiful facility, it's going to retain the intimacy of the previous Opera House, or the Opera House as it was before, but it's going to be really modernized, and we're going to have a theater there that, that really works as a theater, with all the accoutrements that you need to put on good shows. And I believe there's actually eight stalls in the women's restroom, which is four times what we used to have over there, so, with the same amount of seating. So I would support enlisting the help of the theater company in, in this fundraising process, and keeping them funded so that they can put on a quality show, or helping them stay funded so they can put on a quality show, makes a lot of sense to me.
Are you talking about like 10% or something, or? We're talking about a million dollars here.
Well, we, that'd be a good thing, if you're talking about if it is a million dollars. Who knows what, what, I have actually no idea of what the, what the number will be. And I can tell you right now that we do have firm commitments on 110,000. So I think that's a pretty good start, given that we really haven't, we really haven't launched this yet. But I was thinking, you know, 25% for a certain period of time, and then we could possibly revisit that in the future, if, if we want to assess it on how things are going, or something to that regard.
Is that 25% of what they sell, or what you sell?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to get into differentiating between the two, because it's, I believe it's a blended effort. So I, I think it'd be a difficult thing to actually credit, give an individual for bringing a donor. I think that could get kind of complicated.
It, it, it could. But here, here's one of my concerns, and you're on the reopening of the committee with myself, and I know we're going to be short on our 25,000 we put in the budget. By the way, they were talking this morning, and Mitchell and I can help us on that too, but, you know, we did the waterfront, we did, they raised 100, and we matched 100. You know, is it something we can do there to help? Where they, they bring in so much fun, we can, we can match or something?
I think the difference there is they have their own funds to raise for their own side.
For their operation.
For their operation, too. I think this commission just enlists more help from, from them. I would be, I would support 20% on that with some possible cap or some kind of reduction in that, once we go over a certain amount of money. I don't know whether that'd be 100,000 or whatever that would be, but.
Councilman Couch, I do commend you for taking on these efforts, because it's, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done in there, and I know you've worked in there pretty hard with it. There's kind of a fixture in there now, I think you've already got a room in there or something. Anyway, I commend you for doing that, and all the council people for doing the work that they're doing to, to make this thing a success, and I think it will be.
If you want to buy an auditorium, show up Thursday.
There you go.
Yeah.
At this time, I'm now going to declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and that all members are present except for Mayor Ricky Pratt, and that the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney. Counsel will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken at this time. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the J. Mills settlement agreement as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion to approve the J. Mills settlement. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. We will approve that. Counsel, if there's no more discussion, this council meeting is adjourned.